Excellent. Thank you. Today is February 20th, 2024. It is now 6:11 PM and we are calling the meeting to order. And we will start off with public comment. Is there anyone that has public comment? Hands up in Zoom land. Oh, Sally.
Yeah, and quickly, Abby, you know, in general, I'd like to adopt the Select Board's process around public comments. I believe it's one comment for the follow-up, both what, two minutes or three minutes? Is that correct?
Yes.
And just speaking with Bob, it sounds like we need to motion for that. Is that correct?
Yep, I think that's a good approach.
Okay. Yeah, if it's okay with the other board members, I'd like to motion for adopting the Select Board, the Wyndham Select Board's policy towards public comment.
And Danny, you had mentioned to me about a timer. That should be part of your motion unless really clear about what the Select Board's approach is because I'm not exactly specific to it, so.
And we have Michael Belton. Do you think he could help us out? A little bit of explanation there?
Yeah, if you give me a second, I'll see if I can pull up the exact verbiage.
If I may, just want to remind people on Zoom, if you have not been asked to speak, please keep yourself muted. It gets very challenging to hear folks when there's a lot of people speaking. So please wait to be called upon. And we'll go from there.
Just give me a second. I'm trying to find the verbiage so it's clear.
Yeah, appreciate it. And we do, so we do have, while he's looking up, you should be able to see in the top right corner, there is a timer for Zoom.
Yeah, I see in the top left.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
It only appears when you speak. I think that's the only time I see it. Let me see, I changed the view.
Actually a manual thing that I have to hit.
Okay, so public comment is, the Select Board's public comment is read like this. Limit of three minutes per comment, limited to topics that are not on the agenda. Comments should be directed to the chair and order must be maintained. The Select Board cannot discuss items that are not on this agenda. That's the direct quote. You want me to read it again? You got it?
Uh, yes, if you don't mind. Because I have to motion that verbiage, right?
So it reads again as follows. Limit of three minutes per comment, limited to topics that are not on the agenda. Comments should be directed to the chair and order must be maintained. The Select Board cannot discuss items that are not on this agenda.
Okay, so I motioned to limit three minutes per comment, limited to comments not on agenda. The school board, the Wyndham Central School Board will not discuss comments not included in the agenda and comments are directed towards the vice chair or to the chair or the vice chair.
The chair.
Of the chair and order must be maintained. Can I get a second?
Second.
Oh, and included in that, I'd like to add adding a timer within Zoom. Can I get a second?
I second your motion.
Yeah, Lori, second. Any discussion? All those in favor say, oh, is there any discussion?
Crystals are hand up. I don't know if it's from public comment or not.
Oh, so Crystal, is your discussion regarding the motion or is it regarding?
Do you have a public?
A public comment?
Public comment.
Okay, all right, thank you. So hearing no other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passed? Okay, so was that all that for you, Daniel?
Yep.
Okay, and so Crystal? You can go ahead.
Um, I just want to touch base on the Facebook publication regarding the SU office. I think it was pretty unprofessional and it looks like it's board represented, quite honestly. And I'm just going to point blank say it. Almost everything on that publication was false. And many people in this town are absolutely disgusted that at the last meeting, we were told there was no reason. And then a Facebook publication shows up absolutely berating Bob Tebow, the SU, and I find it just disgusting.
I have no idea what. Thank you, Crystal. Anyone else with public comment?
Can I remind public to keep it civil? Thank you.
Okay, Sally Newton?
Yeah, I haven't been to a meeting in a while, so I've been preoccupied with other things. But I just, I heard about some of the things that are happening as far as what the school board has been doing with adding music and art and library back to the budget. And I just wanted to say that I think that's a great idea. And I also want to thank the school board for all their hard work. Because I know you guys have been really working hard to make things work.
Thank you, Sally.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Anybody else on Zoom?
Crystal, cells are hand up. Crystal, is your hand up from before? And then there's another hand. Okay, so Frank and Nancy have a hand up?
Okay.
It's unmuted.
Okay.
First row can they hear you?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I guess that I wanted to mention the fact that the board frequently goes into executive session. And apparently, according to the statutes, Title I, Section 313 of the Vermont statutes, a motion to go into executive session, you have to say the nature of the business of the executive session and no other matter may be considered. And I wasn't absolutely sure that that had been followed every time because in previous meetings, I haven't been at all clear what the executive session was about.
So that is, to my understanding, something that is done for every executive session. So thank you for your public comment. Is there anyone else that has a public comment? Erin?
Yep, I put out an independent survey to the parents and guardians of school-aged children in Wyndham. Sent that out to approximately 20 people and I had 11 responses. The major thing in that survey was where do they want to send their kids next year? So again, this was for parents of school-aged children. Out of the 11 responses, there was two people that wanted to continue sending their kids to Wyndham. The rest of them did not want to send their kids to Wyndham and to go to Townsend or Mountain School and/or Floodbrook. There was one for Floodbrook. So I think a lot of that too with the Facebook posts of, from other people that aren't on the board but are showing board-like private executive session information, since we have asked for those things to, and we haven't gotten a response. But I don't think that has ever been asked by the board where they want to send their kids next year.
So there, we had plans to do a survey and then we received, that's actually was going to be on correspondence of concerns about the survey that you had done, which we were just a little confused as to what that was for. And I think some families were concerned as to how that came out. Did you have other than, like, I didn't see the survey, so I don't personally. It might be an email that I'm not using, but it didn't, so I don't know what the questions were on there. I have no, I really don't know. So was that information? Or was there other information that you obtained because we don't want to duplicate and have people filling out surveys? Is that information you'd be willing to share with us?
I did my own independent survey and I am responding to the people that have actually responded to it.
Okay.
People are afraid to come and tell you that they do not want to go to school here or their thoughts or their opinions for the backlash that happens.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else for public comment? All right. So changes to the agenda. One of the things that, well, it's kind of, I would have said do correspondence maybe before changes to the agenda. And then there would be some stuff with that to add off of what was from correspondence. So I don't know if you guys are okay with that, if we skip making changes, hit correspondence and then add the changes after. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, Daniel, you're good with that?
I agree.
Okay, so for correspondence. So we had, Crystal Corview had sent multiple emails, but multiple questions and some may be answered throughout the meeting tonight. And others we will address in later meetings or via email. Sarah Edelman received a survey that was not from the school board or the SU and was concerned about, you know, families completing the survey and thinking it was sent on behalf of the school board. So, but Erin's kind of already explained what that was. And maybe we can have future conversations as far as how that information could be helpful to the board if she's willing to share that with us. We also received requests to provide a comparison budget, excuse me, and to request to add that to the agenda. So that would be a discussion for today. So that's something that I wanted to add on. And that Russ also sent an email today regarding quality standards for 2025. So that is the correspondence that was received. So with that, making changes to the agenda next, I recommend that we move into new business.
Do we have copies of those correspondence? Aren't they supposed to be provided in a packet to us?
We didn't get a packet, so.
There is a packet available on the SU website. I do not think it includes the actual correspondence, so it does include the rest of the materials for the board meeting.
But we can get, we can get that.
Well, yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, it would probably be good to go over those correspondence with, for the public.
So the correspondence was all relative, well, that what I had mentioned. Some of it's going to get answered in either this meeting or through future meetings or other correspondence and email. But I want to add to the agenda under new business, the discussion maybe after the E20 building use policy, to add there the discussion about comparison budget. Does that sound reasonable, folks? Okay. And then is there anything else that anyone would like to add or change to the agenda?
No, that was it.
Okay, moving along. Old business, to approve minutes from January 18th, January 26th, February 1st and February 2nd of 2024. I make a motion to approve those minutes. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? The January or February 2nd, was that when you went into executive session, but you never mentioned why?
That was a termination hearing.
So what minutes are there to approve?
Very minimal.
Yeah, it's, it's just literally the agenda and when, when we went into executive session and what the motion was out of, out of executive session. And then, and then the final adjournment.
So any other discussion on those minutes?
Abby?
Yes.
Lori, I wasn't, I was attending last meeting, but I was not in the list of attendees. Clearly, I was there. It was, but I don't know if that was fixed. I did send an email to the board letting them know that that needed to be fixed.
I remember seeing.
I fixed, I fixed that and the motion wasn't stated. So I added those to incentive to sue.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure it got on there.
No, I appreciate that.
So with the motion that we have on the floor right now for the minutes, are that, are those minutes the amended minutes? And do we need to specify which ones are amended?
I can click on it. Let me see.
I believe it's the January 26th ones that Lori is referencing.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lori. Yeah, that, those weren't done by me. I think, yeah, we need to amend the January 26th and.
I was also present at that meeting as well.
What's, what's that, Bob? I didn't hear you.
I said I was also present at that meeting as well.
Okay, so we will add you and Lori to that and anyone else that may have noticed that they should have been in attendance. Would be, we, so, so the January 18th and the January 26th, are those the two that we'll hold off on, we'll make the amended thing? The other ones have been amended?
I believe it's just the 26th. Oh.
The 18th too.
Oh, the 18th too, yeah. Yeah, so I recommend the 18th, then 26th we'll hold off on.
Okay, so motion to approve minutes from February 1st and February 2nd, 2024. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All right, moving along to approving financials. So this is Pay Order 25?
Yes, you have two, it's two 25s because you had sent in some last-minute stuff for the lawyer that Wyndham is using now. So you can approve them separately. You can call 125 and 25A about that.
Okay, so move to approve financials 25 and 25A. Can I get a second?
A second, your motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
What were those amounts?
What were the amounts, Lori?
Hold on, I had that up here, but got out of it. It came in with your board agenda.
I have. Yeah. One was $143,243.99 and the other was $1,971.
Thank you, Lori.
You're welcome. Sorry about my last-minute signing. I have not been able to get into my email reliably the last couple days.
And that was for the lawyer that you went after instead of using the school union's lawyer?
That, the attorney fees are for Mark Ottinger, yes.
What's the total amount for that?
1,000?
$1,971 for three, three items.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Just make sure there's no more. Oh, wait, Crystal, they're gonna.
Crystal, did you have something you wanted to add?
I just wonder who pays that fee for the attorney that you guys got personally?
So who pays for the attorney that will come out of our funding? So.
Funding or school budget?
Well, Lori, maybe you can help shed some light on how that works?
Or it's, it'll come out of the school budget for fiscal year 24. The board approved this to be paid out of there.
So there you go. Okay, moving on. So there's no other financials, Lori, that gets us through the financial portion. Is that correct?
I think you're all caught up.
Okay.
Can I ask in the future that you say what the pay orders are for and not just Pay Order 25?
We can consider that, Sue. So, thank you. So moving on to new business and principal report. Is that something we are going to be able to hear from today, Bob, from Townsend Elementary?
Yeah, it's attached to your email that was sent out with all the documents this afternoon. It's from Ray Merluzi, the Townsend principal. And again, available on the SU website as well.
Who did it come from?
Sue sent out agenda and board docs at four, a little after four o'clock today. It includes all the documents, the minutes, principal report, my cabinet report, copy of the building policy that you're looking at, and the agenda and the financials.
Gotcha.
The only thing not was in there is the correspondence, as I mentioned earlier. But that stuff is all on the website as well.
Okay, so I thought that they were actually going to be able to attend tonight. That's okay. So would you like me to read this report?
Yeah.
Okay, so this was principal's report. Academic proficiency. We conducted our winter data meetings and teams on February 5th and 6th. In these meetings, we review and analyze data to create differentiated action plans for small group interventions based on students' needs. Students are then placed into groups with similar needs and taught the skills they show they need to improve on through the assessments we give. High-quality staffing. Our Act 203 grant was approved and TES is sending a team to the PBIS training for Tier 3, intensive behavior intervention plans. March 27th and 28th, four of our PBIS members will be attending the training and plan for summer work for the rest of the team so we can roll out this new information to the staff and implement Tier 3 behavior plans next year. Last year, we attended the Tier 2 targeted training and the students' results have been incredibly successful. Teachers attended grade-level meetings January 17th and 18th. K2 spent the day learning about sound walls. Sound walls are similar to the traditional word walls, but group words by matching sounds rather than spelling. This aligns with the science of reading and our district curriculum for early reading skills. Three to five teachers worked on developing science scope and sequencing for our district using the next-generation science standards. Safe, healthy schools. Radon testing was conducted on February 6th through 8th. Greg may have an update by the board meeting. TES's wellness team has organized an event at Endless Creations in Chester on February 15th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Staff interested will go and paint watercolor on pottery and have fun with colleagues. That sounds awesome. Our Sunshine Committee organized a staff dinner at Phelps Barn on January 18th. We had 15 people attend and it was a nice chance to connect with one another outside of the school day. Personalized learning. Brown and Broom Museum of Art and Culture will be visiting TES February 8th to teach workshops on creating paper art from collages to sculptures. On February 9th, we set up the gallery in the library and on the 12th, classes visited the gallery to see all of their classmates' projects. There's some important dates. February 8th, BMAC Artist in Residency. February 9th, K-3 Sandglass Puppets at the Latches. And then they have open positions for counselor full-time. They reposted for next school year. General Ed Para, full-time, filling in with subs for now. Point 2 librarian, and that's been reposted for the next school year. So that is from the principal. So that is very informative and thank you very much for providing that. And let's see here. Whoops. Do, do, do.
I was hoping that would be more specific how Wyndham kids are doing down in Townsend.
Yeah, I thought that they were actually, she wasn't actually be able to have questions. So that's maybe, Bob, is it possible for the next meeting, if that is something that maybe she'd be able to attend? So if people have questions, they could ask them of her?
Yep, I can absolutely invite her to attend. Zoom would be sufficient, I assume.
Oh, yeah. Awesome. Thank you so much. Um, and with no further ado, I think you're next up in line there, Bob.
All right, so you have a copy of my cabinet report as well for the month of February with report outs from the curriculum office, from Lori's office, Greg's office, IT's office, and our equity coordinator's office, all sharing the actions that have been taken within their realms for the last month. But I want to highlight, you can certainly can read those and ask questions as you wish. I do want to highlight that I understand that this has been a challenging year in lots of ways for folks in Wyndham. February is School Board Appreciation Month. And so I just want to perhaps on my thanks to those who are participating on the school board. And as a former board member in my own town as well, I know the time that goes into it. And just want to say thank you for that work. And yeah, as far as the, the only other news is we're still waiting on what's happening with the budgetary side of things in the legislature. Last week, the House passed a new bill to roll back that cap, that 5% cap mechanism of 127. And the bill also included the ability for school districts to, in essence, pause their voting on a budget until there was more information on what this, you know, what the new bill would look like. That, as far as I know, as of today, has not gone through the Senate or been signed yet by the governor. So it's still just a bill. I think there's still lots of conversation happening about that. And obviously, if that changes, I'll notify the board. I don't know if that would lead you guys to any action or not, or whether you would just go ahead with voting on your budgets on Town Meeting Day. But that's, you know, there's a lot of stuff changing with that. And, you know, the implications are varied based on towns. And so as you guys know, your, your tax rate is with the, with the adopted budget going down. But of course, your property's been relisted, so, you know, it's going to affect people differently. And so that's something that we won't really know with the implications probably. And then, of course, the yield is going to be subject to change through the end of the, you know, session anyway. So that's, you know, you're not going to know your exact implications for tax purposes. But if that passes, you will have the opportunity to, in essence, press pause on your budget process and bring back another vote later. But that bill has not passed yet, so I don't know, Miss Lori has heard anything new today on that. I have not seen any news on that. So that is all I have really. Miss Lori wants to add.
Oh, I think that you covered it all. There's been nothing, no movement as of today, at least that we heard. I mean, Wyndham's pretty close to your vote at this point anyway. We did talk about the 5% being taken off, which still resulted in your tax rate being lower year over year because of the CLA change. As Bob said, your property values are different, so people will probably still feel that, you know. But that's where we're at.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you, Bob. The Act 76 childcare tax. Bob, did you want to talk about that or did you?
Yeah, basically, we can talk about this. It, I'll tell you what it is. And then if you choose to go into an executive session to debate it, it might have contractual implications. But the short version is that on July 1 of this year, there's a new tax, income tax being applied to employers of a 0.44%, and it goes to a childcare fund, state of Vermont level. Employers of which you are one or could be of one, the ability to pass on a quarter of that 0.44%, in other words, 0.11% to the employees. And so if you chose to do that, or you chose to consider doing that, I should say, you'd want to have that conversation in executive session because it could be a contractual change. And you do still have an employee up there currently. But there's no rush to do this at this point. So if you want to wait on that, I just wanted you to be aware. So if you wanna wait on that, I just wanted you to be aware of it. Um that it would be something that you'd have to either, well, discuss, potentially take action on if you wanted to pass on the .11% to an employee ease. Um and because you guys don't have a collective bargaining agreement, uh to be honest, I don't know, Lori, maybe help me on that one. I don't know. You guys, I guess, would just decide what to do on that one. There's no CBA to deal with a union on, so um.
Right.
Yeah, go ahead, Lori.
Yeah, I just think they need to make a decision. Just to give you some context of, um I did a budget for the .44% in your fiscal year '25 budget, so the full amount has been. It's just the law does give the opportunity for employers to pass along some of it to the um employees. Um it's $606 for your fiscal year '25 budget. And that's at the full .44%, so just to give you some context of um what that is costing.
And then the last, the last piece of information I'll throw in, and you guys can decide what to do, or?
Can I make a follow-up to uh Lori's comment?
Yeah, I'll just add this one last thing, Dan, and that is that the the previous, the SU board, um which manages, obviously, a bunch of employees, including special education staff, uh the River Valleys Board, the West River Board, and the um Marlboro Board uh have all, have all voted, or not voted, to basically keep it and absorb that full .44% for themselves and not pass it on. So they have not had to have, take action out of their executive sessions and do anything, in essence.
Uh Lori, is that already, you said it's already appreciated in the budget. Is that uh its own line item, or is that included um in another, another line item?
Nope. If you take a look at the detailed budget, you'll see it. Um it's, you know, as we're looking at this, it's like indirect instruction. It's called the childcare contribution. Uh it's a 5296.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
May I ask Lori a question?
Oh, yes, Sue, um Gray has a question for you, Lori.
Lori, is it too late to ask you for a budget for a non-operational school before Town Meeting?
I think that might be added under new business.
That's, yeah, we just added that to the agenda, so we're gonna discuss that when we get to there, okay? Thank you. Um, all right, so that uh doesn't need urgent action right now. It was more talking about Act 76 and how that's gonna implement future choices for uh the board uh and its staff, so that we can um definitely discuss at the next meeting. Um strategic planning. Um Lori, while you're on, uh have you heard back from Roseanne Neto from the AOE at all? Um regarding like the incorporation date?
Uh so that's actually interesting. Uh it's been passed around a lot um at the AOE, and uh it is now in the hands of Emily Simmons. Um and so I have not heard from her. It went to the Bill Bates, who's the CFO of the AOE, then to Emily. So I do have Emily's email, and I'll follow up with her um to see if we can get that information, so that everybody's searching. Nobody seems to be able to come up with anything. There's gotta be something out there, though.
Yeah, I I sent them examples that I had found for other communities that were similar, that they could um, they could utilize. So hopefully, they are able to do that, and.
If you wanna send those samples to me, that would be great, because then I can uh use those going forward with Emily.
Yeah, I will get this sent to you after the meeting tonight, so.
Thank you.
Awesome. And then, once we have uh that type of information, again, that gets us kind of segue into the strategic planning and grants and um. So there's a current for the Public Service Department Sustainable Energy for Schools and Municipalities program. Um proposals are due on or before Friday, March 1st. Um so this is um eligible for eligible projects, either installation of new and advanced wood-fueled heating systems, installation of new solar photovoltaic systems, uh installation of cold climate heat pumps, air or ground, or repair of existing wood heating, heat pump, or solar system, um or new heating systems. And these uh maximum grants go up to uh $250,000. So um there's just different, lots of different things out there. So when we can get that information and know what we have from the AOE, uh it will open up some more opportunities for us to find um, you know, different resources uh to, for funding. So.
Sure. And Abby, if I can just jump in. I mean, you do have a um what they call an UEI number with SAM.gov that that is already in place and probably could be used for any um applications. Um in the meantime of getting this straightened out, eventually, it's gotta get straightened out. Um so, you know, just so you know, there is a, you do have an account. It's just, it's lapsed at this point until we can get some more information.
So that'd be, that'd be great, and um hopefully, between you and I uh keeping in contact with them, uh someone will get us an answer here, so. Uh and I know that they're incredibly busy as well, so um but uh, awesome. So uh that's all that I have at this point, uh strategic planning-wise. Oh, Michael Pelton, go ahead.
I have a quick question for Lori. Lori, I'm wondering if um the date that the town voted to create a um effectively an independent district and not merge with the um other than Mud there, whether that would work and qualify for an incorporation date? I know it's not the original one, but um it certainly is a hard, fast number.
Uh, yeah, so I mean, I'll, I'm willing to upload it and try it, for sure. I mean, it, what I do is I get the information. Like I I have told you in the past, you know, Marlboro gave me literally a page out of their uh deed book. Um so I'm willing to try anything to get this to go through. Um so if you wanna send something, you know, the vote over to me, you know, the warning and the vote, um I'd be happy to try that.
I don't have that, but I would imagine that the SU has that information. But you have that in storage somewhere?
Probably could go and look in the basement. Yeah, uh, nobody likes to go to the basement. But yes, um I can probably find that uh in 2019, right? That's was when it.
I can, I mean, I had, I did do a fair amount of research in the town office and looking through the original um town records. And I found like, well, the original goat skin, let's say, literally, it's a goat skin, um has a piece of land that's dedicated for the school. So there's one found at the the quote-unquote founding date of Wyndham being Wyndham. Um but there's nothing that says, you know, Wyndham School is such-and-such. And it would be, uh, I'm not sure, like, if it needs to be, okay, Wyndham had a school by such-and-such a date, or if you need somebody, like a piece of paper that basically says the Wyndham District was created. Because, I mean, it depends on how far you wanna go back. I mean, you could go to 1963, when Wyndham came uh went into the SU of in, because pre- previous to 1963, it was part of the Andover District. So I mean, it depends on how far you wanna go back and like what the criteria meet, you know, need to to be to meet the, whatever the threshold is. I mean, I don't know. I I'm certainly willing to do some research and come up with some information. I just don't know exactly what you need for this, the feds to justify that Wyndham exists as a school.
Sure, I I sent all that information to the board. Um I can certainly send it to you if the board uh wants me to do that. Um I I gave, there's a list of eligible documents, basically. Um so I'm, I'll just send that to you, Michael, and you can see if maybe something ticks a box that you have found. Um uh the other issue that has come up with this whole process is is that um Wyndham School District has also been called Wyndham uh or Town School District. So there's like, there's a few different names for Wyndham School, Wyndham Elementary. So I think what we need is um what is the legal name? That's one of the the things on the criteria is what is the legal name of Wyndham uh School District, Elementary School? Um and then the the address somewhere along the line was listed as West Townsend, because I think it's probably the same um zip code. And so there's documents that I have that say West Townsend. There's documents I have that say Wyndham. So it's, it's really a mess, and that's, you know, why everything I've uploaded to them, which I've uploaded probably 12 documents at this point. Um, you know, they're looking for something like, what is the legal name of this organization? What is the legal address? And, you know, where is that file? So that's what I've been running up against. And so that's why I reached out to the um, the state of Vermont, and, you know, obviously, it's been passed around a few times.
Well, I'm confident that the, that they are working on this at the AOE and that they will um hopefully give us a response of of something that's pretty useful.
Do you want me to send the stuff to Michael, then? The required or the requirements?
Yeah, let's see what. Sure.
Okay.
No, agreed.
Yeah, okay. Aaron, you have a question?
What's the deadline for that?
For the?
The paperwork for the incorporation for the AOE.
So, yeah, now, that's, Lori, I'll let you point it.
Sure, so year yearly, we have to um recertify the school districts um with SAM.gov, which is how we can accept federal uh money. So this is all about accepting federal money, of which ESER funds um that come from the SU get passed through to the districts. Um so we have to do that on a yearly basis, and I've been doing it for probably the last 15 years. But they have recently added into SAM.gov, I'm assuming because, you know, people set up SAM.gov accounts, and they wanna verify that it's actually a true um organization to protect against fraud, is they've asked for um incorporation dates, um something that proves they're a real organization, getting, you know, paying bills and that type of thing. Um and that's a recent change uh within the last two years, um or last year, actually. So I haven't been able to re-certify Wyndham. Um it's going on quite a few months now, but I haven't been able to re-certify them without this documentation. And like I said, West River, River Valleys, they're easy because they actually, what Michael was talking about, they are actually incorporated um as of Act 46, right? Because they became a new entity as of that date. So I have all their articles of agreement. I have all of that documentation that I uploaded to SAM.gov. So Marlboro was the other tricky one, uh because nobody really had good documentation that, but they did accept, it was very clear that Marlboro School District, the land was being deeded for Marlboro School District. And there was no problem with their address either. That's the other thing I'm running up against. So it's really overdue, so as soon as possible is the answer. Long, long answer for that.
Then I guess what happens if uh they don't accept any documents?
Um, well, eventually, I'll probably get the AOE to call the government, because I'm not sure what else to do. I mean, it's very clear, you're, you're obviously an organization, so um we'll just, I'll just keep working at it. I mean, I I put a lot of time and effort into getting this done. Um and got the, I know that Abby has too, and getting the, getting the AOE involved um will probably help. I'm confident we can get, I'm confident we can get there eventually.
Yes, yes, I I had high hopes that we would have already had it. Kind of some of the emails uh uh seemed as though we would be getting a response pretty quickly, so I'm hoping.
I was surprised the town didn't have anything either, right? So there's nothing at the town that is obvious, obvious to anybody who has searched that will provide this um resource that we need.
Excellent.
Thank you, uh Lori. Appreciate you trying to track that down.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, okay, so moving along, adopt E20 building use policy. So um the both, uh Daniel, Rory, did you guys get a chance to actually look at the policy and?
Yeah, we did it.
Yep.
Any concerns or thoughts, or what do you think?
This is uh, this is um what Greg uh sent over, right?
Yeah.
Yes, that's.
Yep, no, no concerns uh for me.
Uh, um, so do you guys uh want a motion to have the adopt the building use policy?
Uh we have a couple of questions for the motion.
Okay, let's see, uh David Cherry, go ahead.
Um, I read the document, and I have a couple of questions. They throw the terminology "community" around without really defining what the community is. Is the community defined as the town of Wyndham? Or is it anybody in the community? You know, I mean, what are the boundaries? Because it it talks about the use of the building from people in the community, which I think is totally appropriate. Uh but it doesn't, it doesn't uh exclude people who may be in the community because, and it depends how you define that. So I think it needs a definition of what the community is.
Okay, thank you.
That was, that was my only uh concern.
Okay, thank you. Um, anybody else with questions?
Thanks, David.
Michael, is your hand still up from last time, or did you have something else?
No, I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Uh, it's been a minute since I've actually looked at it, so pardon me if I'm speaking out of turn there. But uh my question is, given that the school is currently non-operational, if somebody wished to utilize the building, who would they talk to to use the building?
So they would likely reach out to the board. Um it also says um that the superintendent may authorize the use of schools. So uh Bob, you wanna chime in on that role there with the policy?
Yep, that's what it says. Um and then further down, it says that the superintendent shall establish procedures for the use of school facilities, which had a minimum layout, a couple of points there as well. Um so what I would probably do, given that it's non-operational, there's no uh principal to to do that at this point, what I would do, so normally, the superintendent would designate the principal to develop the procedure for the building. Uh I would come back to you guys with a draft procedure, which is gonna be similar to some of the stuff that Greg had sent to you guys um as well. And then um you guys can, I mean, the procedure isn't adopted by a board, but you know, once you guys are kinda like, yeah, that looks good, then we put that procedure in place. But yeah, it does direct me to develop procedures.
Okay, any other questions?
In the meantime, you're recommending that people, if they want to use the building, they reach out to you, Bob? Or you recommend they go directly to the board?
Well, you're about to, if they vote to adopt this policy, the policy says to go to me or my office. So that's what the policy states.
Okay, thank you.
Now, yeah, I quickly, I wouldn't mind uh addressing uh David Cherry's comment. I I was looking through the documents. Um there is a footnote uh that uh pertains to exactly uh what um the procedures and what uh the lists uh that could be used. Um it says, yeah, I'm quoting here, "An individual school district could decide to make this list broader or narrower." Uh so it sounds like it is up to the school district uh to define uh community as per what I see here.
Thanks very much, that helped clarify.
Yeah, no problem.
The other, as I was sitting here, uh I thought of another thing. It it also doesn't define um how you're gonna prorate costs for people who um are gonna use the building. It it certainly says you can use it for private functions and all of that, but I think it would be helpful to uh, again, I guess it's up to the board. They could determine that as it's going on.
So the procedure, the list of procedures uh does say that the shall include, at a minimum, one of them is a fee schedule for facilities use. So that would be part of the procedures.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, we, we had some good uh.
information from Greg. I think it was from South Burlington. They, they had a fee schedule surrounding their building use.
Probably refer to that. Any further questions? Sally? Um, I haven't had a chance to look at it, but I was just wondering about, um, things like having a community potluck supper and square dance or, um, Craig Bales and I had talked about maybe doing some outdoor stuff after, for after-school stuff with kids. Um, and having access to maybe to the skis if there's snow or that kind of thing. I just wondered if that is the kind of thing that would be included in that. And I'm not a resident of Wyndham. I feel like I'm a community member, but I'm not a resident of Wyndham. So I was wondering if that, you know, it, how, how that would work. So it would be, I'm, and I don't want to steal your thunder here, Bob, but I'm going to guess that would be under the procedures and how all that works.
Yeah, I think the board, the board would have to decide like, like she mentioned equipment. So does the board want community members utilizing equipment? And if so, is there limits to that? Like, do you want people utilizing the kitchen? You want people utilizing? Uh, I mean, yeah, you'd have to, you'd have to set that up in the procedures, what you want to have. And again, I can come at you with something that, like what Greg had presented that has some, maybe some questions that we can kind of talk through and fill out, um, and approve fee schedule, a lot of kind of stuff, once you guys adopt it. Um, um, and again, if you get to the point where you're like, I don't, this is way more in the weeds than you want to be, you could always repeal your policy. So, um, yeah, I think, I think the policy, the reason that the, the VSPA recommends having this, um, has to do with different groups coming in to utilize buildings and making sure that you're not discriminatory against some groups, but not allowing others and so on, so forth. They want to make sure that boards are covered through their, their actions, um, and not likely to get sued for how they use their building. Uh, but also in some of that we talked about earlier was about having those groups provide, um, you know, proof of insurance so that, that they're passing on a liability that might be incurred during the, the time of use so that you are not incurring that, uh, risk and that's being passed on to the group that's using. So things like that, that are really about more like risk management. Um, but yeah, you can, I think we can specify all that kind of stuff in the procedures.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, Kathy, Idris?
Yeah, I think there's some really good language in, uh, the Wyndham Regional Commission about what is community. So you could probably reach out to Mike McConnell, who's the guy for Wyndham and just say, we're rest, you know, we're looking at this issue and see what they might send. I think they were very helpful in writing the Wyndham Town Plan. And I do think they have quite a bit of, you know, that's a lot, that's not an uncommon question. So they might be a good resource.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, computer.
Michael has his hand up. No, that's from before.
Yeah, then Crystal. Oh, Crystal, go ahead.
So Bob, if somebody utilizes the building, they have to have their own insurance. Is that correct?
Well, that's if the board wishes to cover themselves, um, from a risk management perspective. That's what you'd want to have, yeah. And so for example, like I could tell you, there was a, um, Leland and Gray had a bill, a group that would come in, I think it was a, um, Beekeepers Association, the Vermont Beekeepers Association came and did their annual conference, um, outside in the spring, uh, on the land, not in the building per se. Um, and so, you know, we, we want to make sure that property wasn't destroyed during that process. And so, uh, they had to demonstrate that they, because they were a nonprofit organization, they had could approve, um, a certificate of insurance liability. And we put that on file and went about our business. Now, nothing happened. And so no, nothing ever came to it. But yeah, that way the district is, is protecting itself. So whether the board requires it and whether it has allowances for certain groups that might not have it, that's really, that would be part of the procedures. Um, and I think that would be something that the board will want to talk about once I get a draft procedure in place.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Michael, is your hand still up?
Yes, it is. Um, I was just wondering if there's, um, sort of a waiver process, for instance, if, uh, a group of homeschoolers wanted to come in to utilize the building, wondering if that there would be a, I mean, they're clearly as a group, not a defined organization, and not going to have insurance above and beyond what they have for their own personal health insurance and so forth. Um, would there be like a waiver system in the policy to allow for them to possibly use the school, but not have, you know, uh, their own, you know, special organization insurance?
No option.
Yeah. So again, that would be part of the procedure, not the policy. But, um, I think, yeah, I mean, you can do whatever you want to do. And then, um, we would, you know, we can throw, the reason that Visbit sends out model policies and procedures that they want to ensure you guys are covered. And so it's really about reducing risk as much as possible. You can never fully eliminate it, but you, they want us to reduce, reduce as much as possible for your sake. And Lori unmuted, so I'm guessing she wants to add that. She's our direct connection to Visbit and the insurance trust, so.
Yeah. So understand that our insurance company always wants to transfer risk, right? That's what they, um, always want to do. Um, I would say it would, I would recommend that if, uh, there was an organization that didn't have liability insurance, that there was a waiver in place. I think Visbit sent over, uh, I think I did ask them this question. I may have sent it onto the board. I may not have. Um, but they have a waiver, a, a sample waiver, um, for that, um, purpose.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So is, is there a motion on the table? About the bill thing? Do we know?
Uh, not currently, but I can, uh, I can motion to adopt, uh, E20, uh, building use policy.
Can I second your motion?
Okay, all those, uh, any discussion? We have plenty of it. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Um, and so now we come up to the discussion of the, uh, comparison budget. Um, so, uh, I had received, um, some communications from people requesting that that be, you know, asked of Lori to provide that. Um, Lori, can you share your thoughts on, um, you know, timelines and with what's going on, all the changes, like what, what does that look like for you?
Um, so it, it's tight because I'm actually off next week. Um, but I could probably get something done, but I really need the board to give me some parameters, um, if I'm going to put something together. Um, so are we talking, you know, if the board, it wants to, to do this and provide this for informational purposes only? Because remember they're only, they're voting on the budget that was put, um, that you voted on and was put in front of them. Um, so it would be an informational page only. And does, if the board wants to go forward with that, then I would need to have some parameters, which we can talk about next, if that's what you would like to do. I would need to get it done by Friday. So I need to know the parameters tonight.
Um, it, it, is it possible to even include a page at this point? I thought we were past, uh, the point of the printers and sending them out.
And I think, I think at this point it's more of an information sheet that would be at your meeting rather than a part of the actual report.
Okay.
So, and Daniel, when we present the budget, we, we can only present one budget. Um, however, if information is there and people want information, um, that is something that can be provided. Um, but it's the concerns I have too with all the shifting and stuff that's going on with legislation and is that going to impact tuition costs? Are these numbers even going to be? You know, is it? And I guess I'm just asking that, Lori, like if we're performing this work, is that going to actually be a set of numbers that is accurate?
I think it'll be as accurate as, um, any budget at this point. Really what's happening, um, in the legislature is really about the tax rate. And, you know, this will just, this is really changing expenses, um, that then produces a tax rate. So, um, you know, we have enough information to do that. Um, the parameters that I would need to know are, you know, we, there are 15 students. Well, first of all, is this a non-operational budget? So tuition only budget, right? Everybody is tuition. Um, and then do you want to include? So there's 15 students that are currently being, uh, that are currently not in the school. Um, do you want to include, uh, you know, make that number 20 because we might, you might have some students that are currently, uh, parents are currently paying for tuition and they're not attending, uh, Townsend or, um, anywhere else or, or they're attending somewhere. Um, so estimate on students. Transportation is another big, uh, concern. Do you, because you don't have to provide transportation, um, as a school anyway. But all schools do mostly. Um, so what does that transportation look like? Is it, you want to keep it at status quo so that it's basically running to Townsend? This point? Um, or do you want to expand that transportation to reach other schools? So that's another consideration. Um, the building use, you know, the policy that you're warning here, um, what does that look like? Because if you're keeping your building open to provide building use, then there's a cost to that, right? Do you still want to have it cleaned every week? For whoever's going to use that building? Do you want to pay the heat on that, right? So a lot of, um, it's a little bit different than, um, you know, Stratton, that's a non-operational district because they don't have a building. They don't have a school. They don't, you know, that, they don't really, they provide some transportation, but not all. So it, it is a little bit different in that. So I'm willing to put it together if you are willing to give me some parameters.
I have, uh, some thoughts. Abby, unless you.
Or Daniel?
I, I, I think it's fair to, uh, make a non-operational, uh, information sheet. I think as far as parameters go, I think we would want to take the most conservative approach, uh, which would, I think, include, um, uh, tuitioning, transportation and building use.
Okay.
I, I, I think that's the best way to handle it because otherwise there's too many unknowns. Like, like it, it, it's too hard to min-max that, right? So I think we'd have to, we'd have to take the most conservative approach there.
Okay. And for transportation, I'm sorry.
No, that I think you're going where I'm going is for.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on the transportation. Do you want to provide it for just the, at the current level of transportation that you currently provide or do you want to expand it?
So if there were multiple schools, right, that were tuitioned to, the current transportation probably wouldn't cover, uh, the multiple schools. But would that be correct to assume?
I would assume that. I mean, you're, you know, you would still, there might still be students going to Townsend. So you'd still be running the bus down there. I'm not sure if it's even possible timing wise to be able to do multiple schools. So it's probably, probably to keep it status quo, at least it gives you a number. Um, and it's not doing away with transportation altogether. Um, because I think that it would, you would really have to, like, there's not time to do a deep dive into transportation to look at, you know, uh, could you even run a, a blood book, brook, bus and a Townsend bus, right? So maybe, does that require another bus?
And a Jamaica bus or like, what if there's four schools, right?
Yeah. So it, it may be, right. So it may be too, you know, I think it's too early to do that deep dive. Um, so I guess my recommendation would be to keep your status quo, what's in your budget now for transportation is what would move forward.
Yeah, I, I think I would agree with that if, uh, the rest of the board does.
Yeah.
All right. So, uh, would you like direction from the board, Lori, to produce that budget, uh, as discussed?
I would like a motion for that.
So moved. Can I get a second?
Second your motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? Oh.
We do have three hands.
Russ, go ahead, Russ. Then we have, uh, Michael, then Crystal.
My, my comment on the transportation is that we still need to bring the middle school and high school kids down the hill. So, uh, transportation as it is currently formatted would be appropriate to include. In the future, if there are other schools involved, um, there could be a stipend offered to parents to provide transportation to a different school. But it would not be at the same level as it is to bring the kids down to Townsend. But this is an issue for the future. It's been done in other towns where, um, Weston and Peru and other places that were, families have to bring their children at distance because there's no school bus. There is a stipend provided, um, to the family to help offset some of that transportation cost. Thank you.
Thanks, Russ.
Uh, Michael Pelton and then Crystal.
Um, yeah, I'm just, um, sort of stuck on the transportation piece and, um, also thinking about numbers too for student wise. Uh, transportation wise, I think it's important to consider that we want to provide fair and equitable transportation. So, um, I would encourage the, um, estimate to include transportation to, uh, like additional time to include transportation to locations where students might meet another bus, like for instance, the junction of 121 and 11, something like that. Um, because it's, I think it's important for us to consider if we're, if we're provide, if we're going to go non-operational, we need to provide sort of fair and equitable transportation for all students. It's either all or nothing. It's sort of the way I'm looking at it. Um, so I don't know. I'm not sure exactly how you quantify that amount. Um, I'm not sure how you quantify a stipend in terms of what Russ is thinking about. But if you're talking about presenting a non-operational budget for people to consider whether to, uh, fund the budget and/or keep this, uh, close the school and turn it into a non-operational school, then you need to have, if you're going to provide numbers, you need to make sure that those numbers are, you know, approximately as close as you're going to get. So, um, not providing, uh, transportation numbers that are remotely close to include the stipend that Russ is talking about is, I think, sort of negligent. If there's a stipend, then we should include the stipend. If we're not going to do a stipend, then we don't do a stipend. But I, I don't know. I just think it's, because people are making decisions based on these numbers. So we've moved past the point where people are thinking about, well, we want fair and equitable education. Now the budget is producing, I would argue, more than, um, others, but that's a whole different conversation. And, um, now we're on a conversation of whether the school is too expensive to remain open or not. And that's what people are going to make their estimations on. So if we key, if we don't include the appropriate transportation amount, then they're making their, their decision based on, you know, faulty, faulty numbers. And that's not like, that, that's not a fair decision. And they're going to be shocked when there's an additional expense at the end of the day, if they go non-operational and like, oh, look, it costs us, you know, eight million more dollars than we thought because now we're providing transportation to across the world. So I don't know. It's something to think about. I'm not sure how that works. But I think it's a worthy consideration that we, if we're going to provide numbers, they're as close as reasonably possible. And then the other part is, um,
Michael, you're getting close to, uh, time for, uh,
Sorry. Yeah, I'll be fast. The other part is, um, we need to make sure we're including the most appropriate student count as possible. I know that we're using the town, that sounds like the, the number that Lori is using is the Townsend number. Um, but I think that there are other students that also might be considered in the, um, in the count as well. But I don't know. I, that's sort of my thought, you know, I'll get off because I know my time's up. Thanks, Russ.
Abby, can I just respond to Michael before we move on?
Yes, please, Lori.
Um, so Michael, no, my question to the board was, should I include other students that are out there? So, um, I probably would, would be up at 20 students, um, at, for my estimate. Um, and, you know, I think your point about the transportation is a, a good one for the board to consider. Um, I will also provide a list of my assumptions that I put into this budget so that the public So that the public can see what the assumptions were, um, what they were based on. Uh, the transportation's gonna be hard unless I can get a hold of somebody uh, cord. To, you know. Drive over to Route one hundred. And find out how many miles that, you know, all that kind of thing in a tight turnaround like this. Is gonna be hard to do, um, but I'll do my best and I'll provide my assumption sheet for you.
Lori, um, you know, going back to Russ's comment, um, there there are others that we can model the stipend. Too. Um, i- is that possible to to? Use that type of assumption?
I'm not familiar with the stipend assumption, I know that, um, you know, I I know what. Uh, Stratton does for a group of parents uh, providing. Uh, transportation. So I can probably model it after that, um, but I'm not aware of. Peru and the other places that he talked about. So I would probably use the stipend. If we went that route, if the board wanted to go that route, then I would use that as, um, I would use Stratton's. Information.
Yeah, just based on what I'm hearing, you know, to the rest of the board here. Um, yeah, I I I think we probably would want to include some of those numbers the rest is discussing.
Yeah, I agree.
And it, the question about fifteen versus twenty. That's an interesting one, because the article that we're modeling this based on. Right, for non operational budget would be based on public schools, right? My understanding is the. The five that would be included. Right, in our counts would be students that are from private schools, if I'm correct. And so then.
Or homeschool.
Or homeschool, okay. Uh, that that's an interesting question, um, I don't know if the rest of the board has any thoughts on that.
I think they should be included.
And I'm of a couple minds of it, I mean. I I I could see including them or or not.
Well, I think that we should include them because if we're gonna be tuitioning, I would assume that the parents that are paying tuition or would rather have. It paid for them, so.
Well, but once again, it that applies that as the article has warned, right, is towards public schools, not private schools. So I I don't know, I don't know if that would include.
Good point, Daniel.
No, that that's a part of, well, it it if we had more schools, correct me if I'm, or sorry, more schools. More students, right, correct me if I'm wrong, Lori, but that appreciates uh. The the tax rate, right, so the tax rate is lower because you have more. Students, and then now we're misrepresenting. Right, the tax rate in that way. For students that wouldn't, that possibly wouldn't.
So. So Dan, not for fiscal year twenty five, those numbers are set, right, so the thirty three point. I don't know what it is, point eight seven or whatever, um. I'm gonna use that number because that's what your tax rate's gonna be built on, that number's not going to change for fiscal year twenty five. And I'm only doing a comparison of the twenty five. Proposed budget by the board that's uh, that that will be voted on and the comparison sheet. For twenty five, so. Uh, yes, in. Future years, those students would be counted. Remembering it's a two year rolling average, so it takes two years to catch up. Um, but really. Tax rate purposes, I have to use fiscal year twenty five's long term weighted average that's finalized.
Okay, the my other question is towards fair and equitable. Uh, with transportation, does that include? I if we were non operational, right, and if it included um. Uh, you know, the the current kids that go to Townsend or or decide to go to other public schools, right? Would fair and equitable include the private school kids? Uh, tha- that's a part that I'm not sure.
Think it should.
Uh, I'm not sure I understand what you're saying, maybe Bob. Understands better what you're. Getting at.
I I can answer that, I think.
Well, we're looking for Bob, Russ.
So, so if I'm I'm understanding, you're asking if you were non operational. Would would it be considered equitable to provide transportation to every student? You know, even those that are going to privates. Outside the scope of the petition, which is public only, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, yeah, what what's the delta there, like, like, what is fair and equitable uh, specifically state?
Well, if you're, if you. Yeah, if you guys are, if that petition passes, let's say, and you guys are non operational, you're sending tuition money to publics. Then the students who are attending privates are are not considered your students at that time. Right, so in that regard, if you're, if you're treating your students, that is the students that you're providing education for via tuition. Equitably, then that would be, for me, that would be your your body that you would consider. Um, students, families who choose to not attend. One of the public schools that you've set forth. Or students who homeschool, for that matter. Like you wouldn't, well, not to be, I guess it would be transportation for homeschool, so you get what I'm saying, like those are, you'd you'd wanna narrow down your transportation money. To serve as the best you can to most kids that are your students. That'd be my suggestion, but again, the board could do that however it chooses to at that point.
Okay, but but.
Which includes, as Lori said, not providing transportation at all.
Yes, okay. That makes sense. I I mean, I guess under those guidelines, I think I'd recommend fifteen. As, well, if if for the purposes of transportation, because long term weighted. ADM would still be static, right?
It would be for twenty five, yes, and. Um, but you might have some that are going to pu- private school that might decide to go to public school, right, instead. I mean, so.
That's true.
That's all I'm saying, um. And I would, I'm going to use, um. Which I've done non operational budgets for Wyndham in the past, so. Uh, you know, there's, this has been done before several several times. Um, I'm gonna use just the average, the statewide average for elementary. Public schools. As the rate. Because we can't, you know, say that. Everybody's gonna go to Townsend, or everybody's gonna go to Jamaica, or everybody's gonna go to Floodbrook, right, so. I'll just use that average because that's what we know. And something we can point back to.
Yeah, and sorry, folks, there's a lot of scenarios, but I'm gonna retract on what I just said, because I I think you're right, if there were cases of private. Going to public and. I directed towards the most conservative approach, I think that in in that light, it would make sense to. Have the student count to be twenty. The rest of the board.
There there are concerns, Lori, of tuitions going up with all the. Uh, budget challenges that are going on right now?
Is that a question, Abby? I'm sorry.
Yes, is there?
Okay.
Are there concerns about tuitions increasing significantly, because that's uh, was my understanding that.
So tuitions typically have run around for four and a half percent. For this. Uh, for as long back as I can remember, um, that is what they increase every year, you know, the tuition costs. Are actually more controllable than your salary and benefits, uh, you know, with benefits going up sixteen point four percent, right? Uh, that's an unknown every year, is it gonna be in double digits, it's very high this year. Salary increases, those types of things, those are negotiated, um. But tuition has typically run, um. Probably a few years back, it was closer to three and a half percent. Um, but what I've seen over the last couple of years has been between four and four and a half percent, so I I think, you know. The other schools were taking into consideration inflationary factors. And have built those in, um, you know, inflation has come down, so I don't expect to see, you know. Outrageous increases in tuition, uh. Like I said, they haven't been outrageous um, for many years.
And and don't forget that the tuition rate that she's talking about is the rate that. Remember, you guys voted on setting yourselves a tuition rate for next year. In January, and that's when the districts do it, so that rate has already been set by districts for next year. Um, so regardless of what happens with the legislature or anything else, those rates have already been set. So those are not gonna move for next year, you don't know what will happen the year after, but. Um, those have already been determined by those those uh, public districts.
So for the boards across the state that are reworking all their budgets. Um, there's not a chance that uh, for people maybe extended their their. Um, annual meetings. Um, and those types of things to kind of figure this out that that wouldn't be adjusted in their budget, their tuitions?
Well, the 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 cost per kid they're calculating is certainly gonna potentially change, but the tuition rate itself that's been determined and voted on by boards. Uh, by statute has to happen in January, so I believe that that's, those will not change regardless of what happens with people rolling back budgets.
Right. Excellent, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, yeah, I think I'm under the light, yeah, I don't know. You know, once again, following a. Uh, take the most conservative approach, I think it's twenty kids that we, you know, consider towards transportation. If you guys agree.
And and the transportation is the same transportation that with the one. Um, trip to down to Leland and Gray. That's the.
But along with stipends, right, some type of modeling based on Stratton.
Okay, yeah, Aaron?
So a question with that, because since we have an agreement for seventh, eighth. Ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth, is there an agreement already in place for transportation? That goes down there, which I also, I think we get rebated back because we pick up Townsend kids anyway, so I think. That's still.
In place.
Is in play for contract, so it would probably make the most sense to just have one run.
Yeah.
To Townsend, since you you cannot change those times.
Right.
So. It doesn't make sense to look at driving to multiple schools because you have that contract.
Yeah, which would include some type of stipend. Yeah, an assumption layered in. I I agree.
So to to be, can I ask a follow up? Because I wanna make sure I'm clear on what. Just happened here, because. What I'm hearing, correct me if I'm wrong, is we're leaving um, transportation. Status quo because we have a contract in place, but we're going to add. To the transportation department. Some some amount of stipend, maybe for those five extra students. Right, that I'm gonna model after Stratton, so. In all the transportation budget will increase a little bit. To account for students going to other. Public schools.
Right.
Potential. Okay.
Yeah.
That's, we're we're. Clear on that, I, the way I said it?
Yes, yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, thanks for working with us, sorry.
Yep. Just wanna make sure I'm clear so that. We have a good. Good product when we're done.
Okay, so we've been kind of going round about this, um, do you guys feel comfortable with that direction, Lori?
Yes.
We've had the discussion. So all those in favor?
Right, we do have a couple of others uh. That are um, in Zoom land.
Have they already spoken?
Uh, Russ has, Crystal has not, and David Cherry has not.
Crystal was before me.
Okay, so just.
Uh, go ahead and finish your procedure, I just wanted to make a comment. Before you escaped and do executive stuff, if that's what you're gonna do, I just. It has, it doesn't have to pertain to this, so proceed.
My 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 comment was going to be, if you're gonna pay tuition. I'm sorry, are you through, David? Yeah.
And also, Abby, do you wanna call on Russ?
Russ, go ahead.
Yeah, the 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 one point I wanna make is that when you're. Looking at tuitioning students going forward, you need to think about phantom students for new. Students that might come into town, because you're gonna, you're gonna pass the school budget in. You know, the the first quarter of the year, but the students aren't gonna attend until the third quarter of the year, so you need to build. Into your estimated number of students, some phantom students. To cover your tuition costs so you're not caught short, if you don't have a surplus to meet that obligation. Um, you're still gonna have to pay the tuition, uh, but you need to build into it. Um, phantom students, and what that effectively does is it reduces your cost per student. So effectively, it also reduces your tax rate. So it's something that you need to look forward to when you're considering. Closing the school and going forward from that point.
Russ, can I ask you a couple of follow ups?
Alright.
Uh, so in terms of phantom students, I mean, what would you recommend? I I do know of at least one student that would be entering. Um. Through conversation with the public, but I'm. I'm not sure if, do you have any idea, you know, is it two, is it five? So are we talking twenty five, twenty two?
I think in the past with conversations with Lori, she's talked anywheres from five to ten percent of the student base. Or somewheres in that neighborhood. But Lori Lori has more experience with phantom students in communities like Stratton than we have here. So I would defer to her.
Uh, so it it doesn't hurt to add a couple of phantom students. Um, we are adding five students and some of those may or may not come, so. Um, you also do have a surplus, you know, it. Is in your capital at this point, but um. An emergency situation, you know, it could be used, so I think that. Um. You could be covered for twenty five uh, at the twenty, um. But that's up to the board, we can add a couple of more, we could go to twenty two if that's what you wanted to do.
Yeah, I mean. I I think I take Russ's point that, you know, we probably want, would want twenty two students, right?
Okay.
Cover ourselves, you know, once again. You know, the most conservative way possible here. And then to to Russ's other point, he he made the mention of, and I I believe it directly conflicts with what you said, Lori. Um, this is not towards the the long term weighted ADM, correct? So.
Not for, not for twenty five, and a phantom student wouldn't be either.
So 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 that, whether or not we choose twenty or twenty two, right, as our proxy number, it still would not affect the tax rate in any way. Other than, other than the budget itself.
Right, yes.
Okay.
Correct.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, Crystal?
Uh, my point is similar to Erin and Russ. When you think non operational, you're thinking. K through six. So we're still responsible for seven through twelve. At Leland and Gray, so um. You know, it makes sense when you're thinking transportation. Thinking down to Townsend. Um, I think if you wanna look at a stipend. For people going. Elsewhere, I think that's. Really nice, but. It it makes sense to. Um, stick with Townsend since we're responsible for Leland and Gray students.
Alright, thank you, Crystal. Any further discussion?
No, David has his hand up.
Okay, I think David's still waiting for after we go through, oh, Lori, go ahead, Lori.
I just had one more clarifying question on the building use, I know we said we would keep the building being cleaned, but. I will make some reductions in the um, projects that will be done, right, the. I mean, we'll keep the HVAC maintenance, obviously, because that's important if the building's gonna be used. Um, but I think that there are some reductions in that, those line items that could be made. Um, when you're not, you know, actively having students in and out of it, does that, is that? Uh, what the board would like?
So in terms of those fixed costs, that now would be not, right, are you talking about like, like phone wifi or?
So all that stays, um, all that stays, I'm just talking more about, uh, you know, the, if there's money in there for, um. Uh, just like. Painting or anything like that, right, so that's, that's really maintenance of the building, and typically that only happens when there's students in the building. Um, so it's not a lot, but it just, there might be some adjustments in there, that's all I'm saying. Or I can leave it exactly the way it is, which is fine, too.
I mean, I'm I'm comfortable with, you know, if it if it's logical that it wouldn't happen, right? You know.
Okay.
Unless there were students in the building, you know, students that were a part of the district, you know, that. Yeah, I I agree.
Okay.
As as long as the rest of the board, once again. Agrees.
Yeah. I think that makes sense.
Okay, um. So. Michael Pelton, do you? so, Michael Pelton, do you have, or your hand raised?
I do. Yep, uh, my, my thought, when Lori was talking about reducing maintenance and so forth in the buildings, I would discourage reducing maintenance on the building. Um, my assumption would be that at some point, if the school became non-operational, that the school board would want to, um, sell the building. And if you're planning on selling the building, then you're going to have to present a building that is not in disrepair. And, um, if you stop all maintenance, it's just going to fall apart. And I don't think that's a wise choice if you're planning on selling it, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Um, all right, so before we finish this motion in direct, Lori, to do the things that we need to do for the comparison budget, uh, did you want to wait till after that was done, Dr. Cherry, or you have something to say before that?
I just had a general, uh, point to bring up at the end, end of whatever motions you have.
Okay, so, um-
Whenever the agenda allows.
Thank you. So no other, uh, discussion? Um, all those in favor of Laura, directing Lori, um, to create the comparison budget with the guidelines she's been presented with?
With informational purposes only?
For informational purposes only. Uh, thank you. Um, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. We already did the seconds and stuff, didn't we? See, I'm getting tired. All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, there you go. So, um, Lori, thank you very much. We know it's last minute, but, um, a lot of folks will appreciate, uh, having that information. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sure.
Um, and, um, since what we'll do, uh, so I'm assuming, uh, Dr. Cherry, you had like a public comment? Is that what you kind of wanted to? Um.
Yeah, it's a public comment. I know the comments were earlier, but, it's important.
That's all right, go ahead, sir.
Um, I, uh, as this is, uh, school board appreciation, and Bob, uh, already expressed that, I'd like to express it as a, a member of the public, uh, all three of you and the whole school situation, it's like being thrown into a hot frying pan. And you don't know what else is going to get thrown in with you. Uh, but I think, uh, I, I've gone to a lot of these meetings and I see a, uh, general, uh, purpose that everybody has, and that's to get the best education for their kids. And, uh, sometimes the spices in the pot conflict, but the, it's always been the same, uh, uh, goal. And, uh, I'm really seeing it tonight in, uh, in open discussion of, of difficult problems. And who knows where they're going to lead, but, uh, uh, I commend all of you. And the other thing is, is like, before moving to Vermont, I never realized how much personal time uh, it takes to be part of a town government, and I commend you for, uh, essentially donating your time, because what you get as a stipend is good for a beer, that's about it. So that's my point, thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Cherry. Um, I also wanted to, before we move on, I totally forgot, we did, um, get correspondence, uh, that I didn't add in the beginning. Um, so just because- it was very positive. So, oh, where did it go?
Oh, today?
Yes.
I have it.
You have it?
Yes.
Would you like to read it?
Sure. Okay, so, uh, we got an email, although I wasn't on the original email, but from Michelle Baslin. And she just sent an email to update us because she's working, uh, she had started a project with the Wyndham Elementary School students, uh, to help select and designate estate mushroom. Uh, and it's moving forward to the State House. So she, which I think is pretty exciting. So, um, she, she met with students in November and December, it says twenty twenty-four, but I imagine she means twenty-three, um, at the school. And House Bill H six six four was introduced on January fourth and would designate Bear's Head Tooth as the Vermont State Mushroom. Strong first choice of both Wyndham Elementary and of Compass Middle School students as the newest Vermont symbol. The bill has been moved to Committee on Agriculture, Food, Resiliency and Forestry, and testimony will be taken there for mushroom experts, the Department of Agriculture, and students from both the Compass School and Wyndham Elementary. Uh, the three elementary school students have met with me and they are preparing testimony about the value of state symbols and why their choice. Hareseum Americanum, also known as Bear's Head Tooth, is a good choice. They're expected to testify in the State House in Montpelier by the middle of March. So I think that's a really nice, positive update.
Just, and I know the students involved are really excited, uh, to, to learn about mushrooms. I think there was a day, um, Sally, you might have done some outdoor learning where there was a, uh, somebody had found a hen in the woods.
Um, I wasn't here for that.
No.
I think, I think probably Marco-
Oh, maybe.
Taken him out.
Um, and Ron, um, had brought in a jack-o'-lantern pumpkin, um, there's a lot of, lot of, um, not pumpkin, um, yes, mushroom. So, um, that was, they, they, they did a lot of learning around mushrooms, which I thought was pretty neat, and that i- is actually, um, going to go to, um, the state, which is kind of neat. So, anyway, that was just, just a positive. So I, I want to kind of follow suit there, David. You, you led with some positivity. I didn't want to leave out, um, you know, that really great stuff. And, and thank you to, um, Representative Baslin for, for including, uh, those students and making that possible that they could be a part of it. So, thank you very much. Uh, now I get back to the agenda. So we have covered everything on the agenda, um, and we have an executive session up. Um, I move to enter executive session for the purpose of evaluating the superintendent, public officer under one VSA three thirteen A three. Um, and can I get a second?
Bob unmuted himself.
Yeah, I'm, I was just saying, I'm going to, I'm going to assign Rory the hosting, because obviously from this, you guys are just submitting to a form for Allison Young. Um, so there won't be any action coming out of it. So I will disappear and then not return. So I want to give you hosting ability.
Okay. And then, um, I know that there was some mention earlier, uh, before, because we didn't second or move into executive session yet, but, um, when it says, uh, you know, we're entering executive session for the purpose of under VSA three thirteen A and three, if you look up VSA three thirteen A and three, it specifically will outline, so for those who may have questions on what is going on in executive session, um, it is listed right there. You can actually look that up as well, but it is listed as the, a purpose of evaluating the superintendent. So just so that that's clear for folks. And Erin?
A question, because you said, uh, you were going to go over, you know, Crystal's correspondence during the meeting and hit her points, I guess.
So did anything that we discussed as far, uh, there, there is, Crystal had a lot of questions. So there are excellent questions, Crystal. Um, were anything that was on there today that we discussed today? And if not, there will be some more future discussions on those things, um, that we can, and we can re responding via email. So is that okay with you, Crystal? Is she still on?
She's not.
Oh, no, she is.
I don't see her hand raised.
So, well, e- either way, if, I'm not sure if, um, Crystal, if you get this, if there's more, there probably is more, since there were quite a few questions on there that she would still like some answers to. So that will be, like I said, either in a fu- future meeting or, um, some of that may be able to get, uh, responded to via email.
And that's going to be posted with the, the meeting on, on the SU documents?
The correspondence?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so I can go and see what the questions are?
Yeah, but that should be, is my understanding, if correspondence is, correspondence should be being attached, right, Bob? When we-
Yes. Um, yeah, um, we'll, we'll send the, the email from the person and attach that as a PDF to that material.
Excellent. All right, thank you, and-
Abby, you'll have to send me the one from Michelle, because I was not included in that one. So if you want to send that one to me, I can-
I'll send it to you now.
PDF it over, you can, I'll add it to that as well.
Perfect. Awesome. Um, and, okay, so we've moved to executive session. Do we get a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, and we will move on into executive session. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. We appreciate your, uh, input and support.